Every city has a certain number of, number of individuals who become a vital part of that community. And on Saturday was a memorial service for one of those individuals. And occasionally we get so accustomed to these individuals taking this important role that we sort of take them for granted, thinking that they're going to be around forever. And then we are shocked when they pass away and we haven't taken the time to thank them. So what we've done this evening is we prepare a proclamation in honor of Mr. Arlo Wagner. He was a firefighter for the city of Sunnyside for many years and respected and loved by many. And so I would like to take a moment to read this proclamation this evening. Whereas Arlo E. Wagner, age eighty-six, a longtime Sunnyside resident, passed away on Wednesday, January the fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Mr. Wagner served the Sunnyside Fire Department from nineteen fifty-four until two thousand and one as the Fire Prevention Public Relations Officer. And whereas he was dedic- a dedicated public servant. And his passion for fire safety education was evident in the countless hours he spent teaching and training children and adults on the importance of fire safety. And whereas Mr. Wagner was a beloved figure in this community and has been dearly missed and will be remembered for his compassionate spirit and commitment to helping his community. And whereas Mr. Wagner's legacy will continue to be celebrated by the Sunnyside Fire Department and the larger Sunnyside community. Now therefore, I Dean Broersma, Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three as a day to remember Arlo Wagner in the city of Sunnyside. In testimony whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed done at the city of Sunnyside this twenty-second day of May in the year two thousand twenty-three. And I don't know if there's a representative from the Wagner family who's here this evening.
There is.
I have a copy of this to give to you as well.
Yes.
And I have something else that I'd like to give to you as well. Um, city of Sunnyside gives mayor's coins for service above and beyond the call of duty. And Mr. Wagner has certainly earned that. And your family has earned the right to take, accept that in his name. And with respect for Mr. Arlo Wagner, I would like to present the coin and this proclamation to you. So if you please come forward.
Look this way.
As I said earlier, it is easy for a community to take these individuals for granted. And then when they pass away, it is too late to thank them. I do think Mr. Wagner knew that he was well respected in this community. And the children who would remember him as adults in his presentations. So we wish to thank his family for their sacrifice and allowing him to be of service. So. The next item of business is public comments, and I have one name on the list, and that would be Mr. Mike Kennard.
Um, I stand before you, excuse me, as somebody who's confused. And I guess I'm easily confused, often confused. But never in my life have I seen a situation where a fire personnel, fire chief goes out on some kind of administrative leave and is still on that status. And I don't know what's become of that because he's also a candidate. And I don't think those two jibe for lack of a better word. I don't understand how somebody can be a candidate and continue to draw their salary. And at the same time, be part of um a procedure that I'm just not understanding. And I'm not trying to be obtuse. I don't believe that this particular situation is very frequent. At least in my amount of time of mouthing off up here at the, at the lectern. I have not seen it happen. And as a voter, I think I want to know about that. I want to understand what's going on with my city council. That's not too unreasonable to ask or inquire. And I'm confused, and I think maybe many of you are also confused. And I'm particularly sensitive, not because I'm running for city council. Again. But I'm also impressed with the fact that there's not any um problem with it. And it's just, I guess, going to go on and on and on. And I'm, as a voter, as a candidate, I'm not trying to hide that. I'm shoddy and that not being able to have a better course of understanding what's going on. And as one citizen, and I can't be the only one. I would like to see and appreciate the explanation of how our city can waste money like that, because that's what it has to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennard. Um, in a moment, I'm going to let, uh, city manager all address this, but I do want to re- remind everybody that this information came out on Friday evening at the earliest. And so with the intervening weekend, we really haven't had a great deal of time to discuss this. Um, I was unable to pull up the results of, um, candidate filings over the weekend. Um. But, uh, so yeah, we found out about it about the same time you did. And that's about all I have to say. Ms. Solbo, if you'd like to respond.
Sure. Um, we've actually spoken tonight to city attorney. Uh, tomorrow we will be addressing the county with this. Um, the applications were done online. So I'm sure it was probably an automated system and it accepts probably anyone. So we will get this cleared up, um, in the next two, two days, I would say. Okay?
Okay. Is there someone else who'd like to make a public comment? Please come forward and speak to the microphone. Uh, state your name and city of residence, please, sir.
I'm John Clark. I live in Granger, but I work in Sunnyside. Um, I'm here to talk about the Sunnyside Cemetery. I'm not sure if you folks are aware of what's going on there. And I know it's a privately owned corporation, but let me give my experience. Um, I called in April to buy a plot. And the telephone has just answered both, just like a regular residence, like no professionalism at all. I told them what I wanted. They said, we'll look into it, try to get a plot next to a family member. They said, we'll call you back. I never got called back. A week later, I called them back again. They said, you need to make an appointment. I did. On a Thursday, nine o'clock in the morning. I got there at nine o'clock. The office door said, we don't open until nine thirty. When the lady came up at nine forty, finally at nine forty, I yet, I, I asked her, I said, why did you make appointments for two people, by the way? At nine o'clock, when they're not even open to nine thirty. She ignored me. All we see, she got mad at what I said. And, um, as I proceeded to go into the door, she shut the door in my face. Now, that kind of treatment, when you're just trying to take care of your family members who passed away, is inexcusable. Now, this is also not just my experience. There's a lot of people, i- if you read their Facebook reviews, you'll see a whole host of negative comments about the cemetery. And I, and, and people I've talked to, coworkers and friends, they've all had similar and very, very negative experiences. I've been at, I have been unable to find out who the owner is. But I did get a call. I did get in contact with the funeral, home and cemetery licensing department of the D O L in Olympia. And I was told that the cemetery has had six complaints filed in the last several years. And most of that, they don't return their phone calls, but there's complaints worse than that. And I can give you the number of, as a person, if you'd like me to. Uh, they said they can't do anything because nothing that the cemetery has done is considered illegal. Obviously, lousy customer service is not in the category of being illegal. Okay. So something needs to be done. I'm here to ask, you know, what, whatever you can do uh, for people who simply want to take care of their family members. They should not have to be putting up with stuff like this, obviously. And, uh, again, so I hope that you, as a city council, can do something to find a way to rectify what's going on at the cemetery and hold people accountable for what they're doing. Because by doing so, you'll be helping a whole lot of people, families in this area have an easy process of taking care of their loved ones instead of just the exact opposite of what's going on there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And the cemetery, for everyone's information, is not owned by the city. It's not a municipal cemetery. It is a private business. However, there are codes, and I noticed that Mr. Martin was taking copious notes as you were speaking. And if there was something that we as a city can do about that, we will certainly make an attempt, but I cannot promise results. Um, as it is a private business, so.
And it's also not inside city limits.
And it's outside city limits, yes.
Yeah, we, we don't have jurisdiction.
Yeah. I have heard similar complaints, however, you're not the first one to speak to me on that. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Seeing none, move forward to consent agenda, item number two. Consent agenda consists of the following: the minutes, approve the minutes of the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three workshop. Approve the minutes of the February thirteen, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the February twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the March thirteen, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Payroll vouchers. Approve payroll voucher numbers one, one, nine, two, eight, five through one, one, nine, two, nine, five, and wire transfers as listed for six hundred twenty-three thousand, thirty-five dollars and five cents for the period ending May ten, two thousand twenty-three. Claim vouchers, approve claim voucher numbers one, zero, six, three, five, four, through one, zero, six, four, zero, two, and wire transfers as listed for ninety-five thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents for the period ending on May three, two thousand twenty-three. Approve claim voucher numbers one, zero, six, four, zero, three, through one, zero, six, four, six, eight, and wire transfers as listed for nine hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents for the period ending on May ten, two thousand twenty-three. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, what is a desire council on this item?
Move to approve. Second.
Who was the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you sound different on this, uh, sound system, sir, so I didn't recognize your voice.
Actually, you all do, and, and you sound very clear and very loud, just so you know.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's brilliant, this change. I'm very pleased with it. All right, we've got a motion by Council Beeler, a second by a deputy mayor to approve the consent agenda. Is there debate on this item?
I have a question.
Mr. Beeler.
The importance of the, um, voided check.
Madam City Manager.
I'm sorry, could you elaborate more on?
Says, uh, check number one, one, nine, two, eight, five was voided.
That check was approved at the last council meeting in the amount that it was, and so we just are informing the council that it was voided. Um, there was a hole in the register, so the numbers didn't line up.
Okay.
So we just got it on there for your information.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions or debate? All right, we'll go for the vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. I too wrote aye, the motion carries. Active agenda, North Avenue sidewalk improvements. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute task order two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, three, with H L A engineering and land survey to complete, I'm sorry, to complete the contract documents for the North Avenue sidewalk improvement project in the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. Madam City Manager.
I'm going to turn this over to Stephanie Ray with H L A, who's going to give the staff report for us.
Ms. Ray.
City Manager, Members of Council, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm filling in for, uh, Director Fisher while he's on vacation, and I'm envious as well. Uh, this particular project started in twenty sixteen as a planning phase. Uh, in an effort to alleviate traffic concerns, uh, the roadway formerly known as Roman Avenue, which is in front of Pelletria La Nortonia, um, also the popsicle, uh, location and business in operation. And, uh, driving by that particular area, you'll notice there's a concrete road which was formerly known Yellowstone Trail. Uh, it's one of the oldest transcontinental highways, if you will, in the entire U S. And when you go out there, you'll see there's some concrete stamps in there. So what we're looking to do is, and the screen, um, an aerial view there, we're looking to add curb gutter and sidewalk across a portion of this property frontage, effectively blocking off that Y intersection that you can see where Roman Street is currently indicated. The project will also construct two driveway curb cuts for, uh, businesses to access directly from North Avenue. So this is intended to be traffic mitigation, uh, also pedestrian safety, allowing folks to easily get across that particular area, and then also some enhancement. And, uh, like I said, the project started in twenty sixteen as a phase one. Um, continued efforts may occur on the site, depending on how Roman Avenue, if and when it should be preserved, um, potentially as a park. The city still owns that Roman Avenue as city right of way. So with the task order, we will be finishing design, uh, going into bidding services and construction yet this year. The plan is to have this in construction at the same time as other improvements to best take advantage of economy of scale for like improvements in the city.
Okay, council questions? Or Ms. Ray?
I'd just like to say, living on Schoon Road, that is an eyesore, and I'm glad something is finally going to be done about that and the safety aspect of it. There's a lot of new businesses. They're putting money into Schoon Road. They're doing their sidewalk and, uh, curbing, and it's starting to look good, and there's a lot more people walking on it with the, um, medical facility down there and the fitness center. So it's nice to see something happening finally. Thank you.
Further comments?
I'd just like to say that, uh, where we're, back in, uh, two thousand sixteen, we were looking at creating the a, uh, a little pocket park there, and this was the beginning of that. And I think we're moving quickly in the direction of making that happen, and I'm very excited about it. Uh, the, uh, Yellowstone, um, highway, uh, this little piece of it is, uh, the Yellowstone Highway was one of the first it cross-country continental, uh, highways in the United States, starting at Yellow Park, Yellowstone Park, going west, and then from Yellowstone Park going east. I don't know what happened to the eastern part. I'm only kind of concerned with the part in Sunnyside. So I'm very excited to see us moving forward on that. Thank you.
Further comments? I would like to, uh, just concur with my colleagues. This is, um, it, it has become a bit of an eyesore over the years. It has, something has needed to be done to it, and I'm glad. Um, finally, we're moving in that direction. We've been talking about it for some time. Um, former city manager made some movement in that direction, and now that we're seeing some more movement, it's kind of exciting. I'd like to see that developed into a park to preserve that heritage of that. As, as someone who enjoys traveling, and I do a great deal, that I'm always looking for what, uh, author William Leest Heat Moon described as blue highways. The, uh, narrowest highways, the, uh, the old remote roads that take you through the small towns, and the Yellowstone Trail is an example of that. And so I'd like to see that preserved. That's kind of exciting, so. So if there's no more comments or questions, what is a desire council on this item?
Move to approve. I'll second.
All right, motion by Council Ripley, second by Council Hart to approve uh, or to authorize the city manager to execute task order two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, three, with H L A engineering and land surveying to complete the contract documents for North Avenue sidewalk improvement project in the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. I too wrote aye, motion carries. Thank you. I think it's going to be a great thing. Item B, the ADA transition plan. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute task order two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, two, with H L A engineering and land surveying to conduct the self-assessment data collection phase of the ADA transition plan in the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Madam City Manager.
Again, I will have Stephanie Ray from H L A present this item.
Ms. Ray.
City Manager, Members of Council, thank you again. The ADA transition plan is difficult to explain, but in essence, it's an unfunded mandate from the federal government through F H W A. And what the, what is incorporated in this is every city that employs fifty or more people are required to have an ADA transition plan. And while the name is simple, what they're requiring is, the first step is a self-assessment of every, um, active transportation element within city right of way to the entire city. So this is sidewalks, if they're there or not there. If they're there, do they meet ADA compliance? Is there an ADA ramp for people to safely cross? Doesn't meet ADA? Do you have audio attenuation at your signals? Do you have push buttons? And this plan, uh, what we're looking to do is the first phase of this plan, and as you can see with the numbers, a hundred and fifty-seven miles of sidewalk is what's within the city of Sunnyside. It's a major undertaking for any city, um, especially a, a city even the size of Sunnyside. And so what we will be doing is, we'll actually be walking a hundred and fifty-seven miles and documenting if every portion or any portion of the city sidewalks meet ADA. And the first step is to self-evaluation. Um, the second step is to do an implementation plan, and that's also required by F H W A. So based on the findings, uh, through this phase one, if an ADA ramp or an entire i- intersection is non-ADA compliant, how much is it going to cost? And what is the city's proposal into correcting those deficiencies? So this type of document is required again, um, by F H W A. And late last year, um, the D O T and federal programs, uh, softly initiated a requirement that having an ADA transition plan was going to be a requirement of continued federal funding. So Sunnyside, um, like a few other cities within our Yakima County, do not have an ADA transition plan and consequently are moving in that direction. So, uh, this document is going to be robust, um, and the, I guess, the bulk of it, I'm looking at Trevor because he did one in Yakima on his bicycle. So the vast majority of the plan is going to be boots on the ground, documenting what, uh, non-compliance issues are currently are. And that is what this task order is for. So if you see our folks out there walking around with soaps and levels, you know exactly what they're doing, but. Um, and putting, uh, you know, a foot forward, uh, this is really a first step to having a robust active transportation program within your city to provide, uh, crosswalks and sidewalks for, for everyone. So it's a good first step.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments for Ms. Ray?
I, I have a question slash comment. This ADA plan, does, does it also include the shape or the the, the goodness of, of the sidewalks, the, the rotten sidewalks, the ones that are up and down and missing, uh, so that is, that is included in, in that, uh?
So for ADA compliance, uh, especially for sidewalks, ADA ramps have their own requirements. But there's a width requirement for sidewalks. Uh, there is an elevation difference. So, um, when you're walking along and say there's a tree there, and all of a sudden you have a panel that's sticking up two inches, that's an ADA compliance issue. There's also a compliance issue for, say, power poles or trees or yeah, mailboxes for being in the middle of a sidewalk, and those are all things that we'll have to document.
Obviously, we have lots of problems with our sidewalks, obviously. Uh, is there any, have we done anything regarding the funding of the repair? Uh, or the maintenance of, of these sidewalks that, that they're going to find?
Yes, so, uh, through the ADA transition plan, the first step is to identify the problems. You know, and, and to better develop, uh, capital projects where we can go out and get funding. And so sidewalks and, um, compliance issues, entire intersections can be funded by multiple funding programs. We just need to have that start, uh, to know which funding program to go after. You know, there's a big difference between, say, a hundred thousand dollar project and an entire intersection, uh, like, say, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this is the start of all of that, um, to develop an implementation pro- program. Uh, generally, uh, the F H W A want you to develop an implement- implementation plan for ten years. And so what the plan will yield is a schedule of improvements, um, throughout, you know, each year. And what our goal would be on our end is to group like projects with other funding opportunities to ca- take care of those improvements and live using city resources.
Further questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Hart. I know you want to say something.
I'm try- trying to think out how to, uh, verbalize it. Uh, the, doing this, this first part, the I, the IDing of the, the problems in the city on that hundred and fifty-seven miles of sidewalk. Um, you, when you start using a cane or working with somebody who has a walker or even a scooter, trying to get around, or even if you're riding on your little, uh, those, uh, scooters that the kids have, those little kind of roller skating kind of gizmos. Any, any change in elevation or, um, crack in the sidewalk is, is just danger. This, it's, uh, it's really terrible. Since I'm using a cane more often than I used to, it's really a problem for me, and I really do appreciate, um, the ADA um, mandate being in place, and I wish more places would, some more of the residential areas had more of that going on. Um, housing is, um, just discovered there's not a single one place where I'm living in, so I don't know who to call, but I might just somebody's going to get called. Um, but I'm really happy about, about this project moving forward. I think this is well, well timed.
Further questions or comments?
The days of just waiting until we're going to work on something and then make a complaint is over. We have to get a i- itinerary of what we need.
Yeah, it sounds like there's a bit of a fire lit under our feet at this point.
Exactly.
I will say though, that, uh, you know, as a weak attempt at humor, the city of Sunnyside does have one of the longest ADA ramps in the region. Um, starting at, um, I don't know whether it's Sunnyside Avenue or Stackhouse, or in going up the one-way portion of Grandview Avenue up to the top there. Um, I get tired just hiking up that, so I don't know how you're going to make that one ADA compliant.
Well, there is a compliance item that says I only have to chase it for fifteen feet.
Hmm.
But, you know, in that case, it'd be a switchback.
Oh, a switchback. Now that'll be entertaining. All right. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, what is a desire council on this item?
Move to approve. I'll second.
Yeah.
Motion by Council Beeler, second by Council Hicks to authorize the city manager to execute task order two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, two, with H L A engineering and land surveying to conduct the self-assessment data collection phase of the ADA transition plan in the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Further debate on this item? Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, I'm excited for this. I was really glad to see it get started.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. I too wrote aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing. Pardon me while I find the right page. All right. Public hearing, the purpose is to receive comments on the sale of what is commonly known as the Munson property. Um, I think was officially known for some time as the West Sunnyside Business Park. All right. So I'll read the introduction. This public hearing is to be held to receive public comments and recommendations concerning the sale of twenty-nine, twenty, Outlook Road, Sunnyside, Washington, commonly known as the Munson property. The concern is that this hearing be fair in form and substance as well as appearance. Council members, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Council members, can you here consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members, is there anyone in the audience who objects to my participation or any other council member's participation in these proceedings? If there are objections, please approach the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and state your objection. The time is now seven oh two PM. And the public hearing is now open. Madam? Well, the procedure, the city manager will first provide the staff report on this item. So madam city manager.
So Munson property uh sale, we um actually have. Um, had this property for over twenty years. It was intended to be a business park or some kind of mixed use. Um, we were contacted by two gentlemen that are in the audience. And they're interested in having this be a mixed-use planned unit development. Um, and. We had it appraised and they came back at ten percent over the appraised value.
Thank you. All right, any person in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter, please approach the microphone, state your name and address, and offer your testimony. Nobody's rushing forward. All right. Council members, do you have any questions or comments on this item? I'm just gonna make one comment, I'm kind of excited to see this uh moving finally. This has been a long time. We've been looking at this property for a very long time. And we've had a few tentative offers, we've had some people try some things. And um, this is. The first one I've seen with any real. Effort behind it, I think that's. I'm kind of excited about this.
I, I'd just like to add, add to that mayor, um that uh. Having that on the west in, we- west entrance of Sunnyside is gonna just really improve the look of that end of town. I think it's gonna really create some buzz out there that we really need, and we don't, you know, we. Running out of space going the opposite direction, so it's nice to be able to still have the western. At uh portion of town that we can, we can do something with, and this is very exciting, and I'm. Really glad of the folks who are taking this on, cuz this is, this is a really good thing for the town.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, any further comments? All right, well, this public hearing is now closed as of seven oh four PM. One of the shortest public hearings I've ever heard. All right, that moves us onto the next item on our agenda, item D, the sale of city property. Munson property, consider approving a resolution. Authorizing the city manager to sign a vacant land purchase and sale agreement. With Munson Vetter Development LLC for the sale of the Munson property at twenty nine twenty Outlook Road, Sunnyside, Washington. Madam City Manager.
So you just heard my little song and dance, it's about the public hearing that all stays true on this item. Um, it will not only help us with the debt service, but will also help us with the maintenance of the property. Um, and uh, you know, just all of the things that go along with owning that property, so uh there is um. Basically. Two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, it'll save us annually. Um, so property taxes, uh irrigation, there's a lot of things that come. With owning this property, and I, and it'll be a huge improvement for our town.
Thank you. Council members, any questions or comments for city manager?
I'm excited over it. I think it's gonna really bring a lot to the town, that end of town. And. The housing and the apartments and. Everything's good about it.
Well, yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, this, this property was purchased by the city in order to be sold. It was not purchased by the city to, for us as a city to do anything with it. It was to uh help alleviate a problem that the city had. And the idea was for it to be sold. It has taken some time. There's been a couple of uh economic downturns and, and. Different things that have happened over the years. Um, but this was our end goal, to get it sold to somebody who would develop it into something beneficial for the city, and that's what we're looking for here. And I have um spoken to the. Uh, purchasing party, and I find that their plan is very interesting. I have taken the liberty to go through, through some of the projects that they have developed already. Uh, one in the Tri-Cities, and I looked through that, I just kind of wandered around on my motorcycle one Saturday afternoon. And find their developments to be aestheti- aesthetically pleasing, which is for me important. I don't know if it's important for everybody, but for me it is something that matters. Um, as we drive through our town, um, I foresee that. I'm gonna have to drive past that for the rest of my working career. And I want to drive by something that I can feel proud of, so um I'm liking what I have seen up to this point. So, further comments or questions? All right, hearing none, what is the desire counsel on this item?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, who made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Hicks made the motion and.
Made a motion and then.
And Jim was the.
Okay, that's. What I thought, okay, motion by Council Hicks, second by the deputy mayor Stucci. To approve a resolution that authorizes the city manager to sign a vacant land purchase and sale agreement with Munson Vetter Development LLC. For the sale of the Munson property at twenty nine twenty Outlook Road, Sunnyside, Washington. Debate on this item?
No debate, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to make a comment. I wanna thank staff for, for the work that they did to, to get this to where it's at. Um, and uh, you know, council as one of the, I mean, Mr. Farmer is on there now, but. He left and came back. I'm this only one who's been here since we bought that property in two thousand five. Or four, I forget now. Um, and I'm super excited to see this finally come to fruition. Um, I, I've told people before, I, I kind of felt like this was an albatross hanging around my neck, so I feel really good about this, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. All right, with those comments. All in favor of approving this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose no. I too vote aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody involved in this process. Your work is very much appreciated. Item E, Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC and Zipley Wireless LLC franchise agreement. Consider adopting an ordinance with the inclusion of the franchise fee. Madam City Manager.
And I will turn this over to Trevor Martin for staff report.
Mr. Martin.
Good evening, City Council. Um, so I have before you just a simple uh franchise agreement, utility agreement. To set up a contract with Zipley Fiber, they're out of the Tri-Cities, they would like to extend. Fiber data services within the city limits. Um, the reason I have it in there with the inclusion of the franchise fee. Is so that um we can go directly to Zipley Fiber for their franchise fee. Uh, um, to have them be responsible instead of charging any sort of provider that they might. Have tag in there, um, and doing it individually by provider. So that's, that's the reason the um, the inclusion of the franchise fee is in there. Um, it'll be for a ten-year term from the date of the signed ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions after that.
Any questions for Mr. Martin?
Do they plan to bring fiber throughout the whole city relatively early, or is it something they're gonna slowly work yet?
Um, I think. From what I understand, they wanna move pretty quickly and pretty aggressively and get it into the city. Um, they've been. So I, I think they're gonna move pretty aggressively in it to get it into the city, yeah.
That, that was, Mr. Mayor, that was my question as well, is that um they don't get to cherry pick where they put this service. We, we wanna make sure that it's available to all citizens of Sunnyside.
I agree, sir.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? I have one, and a lot of it's just because I am not terribly familiar with the whole fiber thing. Is this something that's gonna be an underground line? Is it going to involve tearing up streets, or are they gonna run it through existing conduits?
I believe uh existing conduits where they can, they might need to extend and cut into different streets if it's not available, yeah.
Okay. Cuz I just continue to look at our streets that have uh been waiting for asphalt for quite some time. I drove through the Franklin Court Development last night and um. Was glad I was in my SUV and not in, in the little Volkswagen, so. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Martin? All right, what is the desire counsel on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
And that was Ms. Hart?
Yes.
All right, motion by Council Beeler, second by Councilor Hart to adopt an ordinance with the inclusion of the franchise fee. Debate on this item?
All I can say is it's really gonna help the businesses that need more fiber, but it's also gonna help the homeowner too. It's very fast and very efficient.
We have a fair number of residents of Sunnyside who work from home and require reliable, fast internet service, and so this will be, in fact, very, very helpful. All right. With that being said, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose no. I too vote aye, motion passes. Item F. SMC five dot four two amendments, consider adopting an ordinance amending Sunnyside Municipal Code five dot four two. Madam City Manager.
Again, this is Trevor's to report on, so I will hand it over to him.
Mr. Martin.
Oh, and good evening again. Um, so what I have before you is an amendment, a proposed amendment. Um, within chapter five point four two of the Sunnyside Municipal Code, so. Um, the city has been approached by a local property owner and a company. And a separate private company. Um, to locate a firework warehouse and distribution center in Sunnyside. When I say firework, I mean the, the snaps, the sparklers and the little, little poppers, so no aerials, nothing like that. Um, it's all consumer grade. Um, the distribution center is, has been proposed in an already existing building. That's in our M two zoning district off of Fourth Street. Um, you can probably imagine the one I'm talking about. Um. Currently, the storage, this, the storage and sale of fireworks is prohibited in all areas of the city, and this includes warehousing and wholesaling. So this company would be importing um their, their product. It would be going to this warehouse temporarily and then being stripped, shipped to um different. Uh, different stores throughout the United States. So no sales, no direct sales to consumers would be happening at this area. It'd be a logistics commercial center only. Um. So the city staff has reviewed, the consumer has reviewed the subject of consumer fi- um firework materials. Um, reviewed the zoning code and determined if the building meets certain criteria within the fire and building codes. Um, limited permission for firework type uses can be allowed in the heavy industry or um can be allowed. Um. So we, I sat down with our building inspector and our, our um. Fire chief, and we talked a little bit about uh what this would mean, what, what's the storage of these types of materials means, cuz the, the company sent over their data sheets. We looked at them, and we kind of did the math, and the, this building would need to store something like. Seven million sparklers or something like that in order to kind of not take it from an S-grade building, which is a storage-grade building, to an H-grade building, which would be a hazard. Um. The existing building has a pretty robust sprinkler system at this point in time. Has plenty of coverage for what they have proposed to store in this building. Um, so warehousing and storage are already a permitted use in the M one and M two zoning districts. However, chapter five point four two specifically prohibits all uses, sales, storage, and purchases unless specifically stated. International Building Code and Fire Code specifically address consumer-grade fireworks and the amount of material that is allowed to be stored. Before the building needs to install specifics, fire suppression upgrades. The proposed. Building or the, the building proposed for this use already has the adequate fire flow. And building access, and the company could move in with minimal changes to the facility. Um, so they've, they've done their homework, they've worked with the property owner, they, everything. They, they meet the fire and building code regulations. The big hurdle is chapter five point four two and actually locating some sort of warehouse, storage facility. Um, that would be able to logistically move this product to um a consumer market. So that's, that's, and that's why I'm here before you. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
So to clarify, we're talking about a distribution center?
Correct.
Nothing is gonna be retail out of this building. All right, council questions or comments?
It isn't gonna be processed or reprocessed at all?
No manufacturing, no processing. It's simply taking it from. One, one transportation unit, storing it, and then moving it.
Okay.
Yeah.
My, my, my concern would be, and I think you addressed it, um. The building, the liability is that, that they would have with a adjacent. Businesses, uh I, I'm a, I'm a little concerned about that, but if it passes the. If it passes the inspection and, and, and the criteria for that, uh. It's a business, uh. Not gonna be s- sold in. In Sunnyside, uh it, we're, we're kind of. We're kind of on a two-sided thing here. We don't, we don't allow them, but you can have them, you can sell them out of here, you know, or you can transport them out of here, so. Uh, it's kind of a, a, a double-rated sword there, whether, you know, some, sometimes it won't make us look real good.
Right, and we're, I mean, we're, we're at a logistical advantage, being where we are in the state. That it's easy, it's easier to move things around once you're on this side of the state and this side of the mountains, so. I think that's, that's the reason we have a building that's ready to go. Another thing that I will say is that this company does not stack anything. So they, they're looking for facilities with floor space, so it's gonna only gonna be one pallet on the ground kind of. Enrose through this building, so nothing will be stacked, or they won't have things jammed in there, so to speak.
Further questions or comments?
Just a question, are they going to be um. Transported by, by trucking transportation, or you said somewhere off of South Fourth Street. And do they also, are they also going to be using um rail? For transportation or just?
Just, just trucking.
Just trucking. Thank you.
Other questions? I guess as for my part, as Mr. Farmer mentioned, it does seem. Uh, both ironic and hypocritical maybe. Um, we're in the midst of trying to come up with a. Plan for fireworks and how to control the uh. Letting off of those, they don't, so they don't spend the entire summer shooting off fireworks, and then yet we're also considering allowing the storage of fireworks in Sunnyside for distribution around the country. Um. Yet, at the same time, when you analyze it, it is actually two different things, because these are not being avail- made available to consumers in Sunnyside. We're not gonna have lines of traffic on the Fourth of July or end of the year, trying to buy fireworks out of this facility. And probably for the most part, most people aren't gonna know that it's there. Um, unless we put up a big sign that says, hey, fireworks here, so. I can see how it would work. Um, when I first saw this, I was a little concerned when I saw it on the agenda and thought. Yeah, but. More I studied tomorrow, I realized, yeah, this is something that can be. It can be done. Um, just make sure that, you know, the fire department believes that that is. A properly protected building, and it meets all the requirements that they have, that you've looked at it, made sure it meets all the requirements that the city's gonna have in the other aspects. And that they're being compliant with all safety measures. I think that is, that is huge. Um, you hear in the news every once in a while about a fireworks storage facility or a factory going up in smoke. And it's uh probably a magnificent fire, but this nevertheless is not something we wanna have.
Have the neighboring businesses been contacted? Uh, I, I mean, I don't even know if there's a neighboring business, but have, have the neighboring business been contacted and, and, and asked their opinion? On having a whole bunch of fireworks and bombs next door to them?
So the, there's a, it's co-locating with an existing bu- business, um, that, that's already in place, and the. So this is kind of a, it's kind of a weird spot, and it's kind of a win-win for the existing business, cuz the existing business was probably going to leave that facility if they had to not have another. Person in there kind of helping break even. Um, so they, they know it's, um, there's, in that area, there's probably. Two or three property owners, and the, the one who owns this building owns. Uh, most of it around there, so I'm. I, I don't know if he's notified anybody. I haven't notified at this time.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak on this with for uh? Mr. Martin, just momentarily, just.
Yes, you may, sir.
And just to kind of uh. Probably ease some of your concerns, from the fire standpoint, our concern is, is very minimal. Um, this occupancy is a, is a type two non-combustible building, so um. God forbid something were to occur in the facility, the likelihood of it spreading outside of the, the, the main building is, is very low. Um, furthermore, based on their model of storage and the fact that they have a very robust fire protection system in there. Even if something were to start in there, um, the amount of fuels, which would be um. I wouldn't call it black powder, but you know what causes the, the boom in the fireworks, these are non-aerial fireworks. Um, but the likelihood of, of a, of a fire spreading to beyond just the footprint is incredibly minimal. Um, and again, it has to do with their type of storage, the type of fireworks they are storing, the makeup and the construction of the building and the fire protection system that they have in place.
Okay, thank you for that, sir. Further questions or comments? Further questions or comments? All right, good questions from all of you. Um, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Counsel Ripley, second by Counsel Hicks to consider adopting ordinance amending SMC five dot four two. Is there debate on this item?
Uh, another question?
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, when your opening remarks, you said this was snappers and poppers. And now we're back to actual fireworks. Is it black powder fireworks?
No, it's snappers, poppers and sparklers.
And, and sparklers. Okay.
Yeah, this being as dangerous.
Yes.
Snaps at Walmart.
All right. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, no?
No.
I too vote. Aye, motion carries. Item G. Fire EMS command vehicle authorized purchase. Consider authorizing the purchase of a new command vehicle. Madam City Manager.
I'll turn this over to our acting fire chief.
Chief.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, appreciate your time. Um, we're requesting is a, uh, is approval to purchase a replacement convey, command vehicle um, which would serve uh, fire and EMS purposes. Um, what it would be replacing is an existing uh, two thousand and five Tahoe, which is um, in very used condition. It's uh, unfortunately, fire uh, fire apparatus are, are serve a very specific purpose and unfortunately that purpose a lot of times is create some uh, wear and tear on the vehicle. Um, so just what we're asking for is um, again authorization to move forward with the purchasing and outfitting a uh, replacement uh, fire command vehicle.
All right, any questions for the chief?
What uh, particular vehicle are you looking at?
Yeah, right now it's a uh, Chevy fifteen hundred uh, crew cab pickup.
That'd be perfect.
The, the, in, in reading the uh, the uh, asking for this vehicle, authorizing this purchase, there was nothing said about the condition of the Tahoe, other than it had a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. Uh, mechanically, aesthetically, i- is, is it still a pretty good rig?
No. Uh, no, it, it has uh, mechanically, it's, it's okay. Aesthetically, it's, it's poor. Um, the paint is coming off, the graphics are, are very much sun bleached, the light bar is um, functional about sixty percent of the time. Um, and the back hatch does not open or close.
And, and then may, and maybe I missed it. What are we gonna do with the old one? Are we gonna sell it? Are we going to trade it in? What, what are we doing there?
At this point, before we uh, approach that concern, we were focusing on trying to get the replacement and then um, address what to do with the vehicle. It, it can still serve a purpose, but the purpose that it's intended for currently, it's, it's not currently functional. Okay.
Thanks, sir. Further questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Madam City Manager. Um, didn't we join this group that's supposed to purchase our vehicles for us and take care of the tradions and all that? Are we using that?
I will let Miss Wonder. Um, this is part of that program.
It is.
And so the vehicle, um, we have been short vehicles, which is why the acting chief is unwilling to commit to saying that we're gonna sell it. But um, most likely we will use their program to resell it as well. But we may actually be able to get more money for it, selling it privately. So we'll just have to see what happens. But Public Works at this point may determine that they want to use it.
Other questions or comments? I do know that uh, our fire department is to be commended on making their vehicles last as long as they have. That Tahoe's been around for a very long time, since two thousand and five. That makes it more than fifteen years. And that's uh, that's a lot of life out of a first response vehicle that is rushing to the scene of an emergency, the scene of a fire, whether it be a, a house fire or, or, or a grass fire. And I have seen that thing bouncing across the field before, literally. And so I know that it's not always uh, gently used. Um, these guys have a job to do and they're using the vehicle as a tool to get to that job and to perform that job. So um, I can see where it is getting a little bit uh, loose in rather important places. But uh, yeah, and, and one of the other things that we talked about is that we do need to keep up to date with our vehicles. Um, we can't have our first responders driving around in vehicles that are not, are going to fail on them. And so this has been a priority to us over the last couple of years. So this is, I think at least a step in the right direction. So further questions or comments? What is the, Ms. Hart, were you gonna say?
I'm just gonna echo um, your, your remarks there about keeping uh, equipment uh, in working order, up top notch working order. Cause like you said, it's a matter of safety for all concerned. So I'm, I'm in favor of purchasing this.
Thank you, madam. All right, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, counsel, uh, motion by Counsel Beeler, second by Counsel Hart to authorize the purchase of a new command vehicle. Debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no? I too vote aye, motion carries. Item four, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I have nothing at this time. No applications. Clerk indicates none. If you have anybody who is interested in serving on an open position, boards or commission, please uh, have them either get on the city website or talk to the city clerk who can steer them to the right place, place on the city website. And they can then fill out the application. Counsel requests status report. Madam City Manager.
Okay, so this is on the Roger Brooks presentation. City staff has developed a packet for, um, sorry, you have to make it bigger. I can't see it. Yeah. Developed a packet for a local city administered um, revolving fund using our funding. The revolving loan fund will specifically be geared towards small businesses and have an interest rate lower than the current national rates. The revolving loan will also be eligible for first time business owners and business owners who do not have long-term established credit. Staff will be presenting the completed application package to the community and Economic Development Commission on their next meeting at June, June sixth.
I like that. That's a great idea.
That's a super idea. And, and it serves, it serves a really interesting per- purpose to, um, it's being used in a number of different cities. And uh, this is a great way to help people stay in their homes or uh, getting to homes. It's, the loan portion of it is, is really well laid out as well.
And to help people in their business.
Oh yes, exactly with the businesses.
And the water tower, we don't have an update on that one. So we'll go on to the next one. Noise ordinance.
I don't have an update for noise.
Nothing on noise ordinance. Uh, code enforcement, staff continues to work with Open Gov to establish a new preventing software. Code enforcement has much their portion of this program built out and is in the testing phase. The city has also adopted an administrative fee schedule, is working with property owners in the city to educate them about the new code changes and encourage compliance. Okay, fireworks. The Community and Economic Development Director has continued to work with a Washington-based fireworks company to discuss various standards and establish the difference between aerials and non-aerials and consumer versus commercial fireworks. The company would like to continue to work with the city to estou- help establish standards and a definition that works for the community. And this is the business that plans on locating the here. So they're, they've helped a lot of cities around the nation do this. So they're, they're actually wanting to he- help us with it. So that's on our council status report.
Okay. Is there a chance that we can have something in place on fireworks prior to the Fourth of July, or is it we gonna be pushing it a little?
I will try my best.
I know it's a lot to ask, but we'd like to be able to have at least something. Um, you know, be able to make some sort of a statement about this, you know, because it is, I mean, honestly, these fireworks go off for a month. And it's fine for a while and it gets real tiresome after a while, I think for almost everybody. And then as time goes on, people get less and less cautious. And then there's a little more risk there as well. So thank you for that. Item C, other reports, announcements and or questions by council. And we'll start at the far end. Mr. Beeler.
Well, I got to enjoy a ribbon cutting. Some high school kids worked on a community food bin to give to the homeless people out on Sixteenth Street. So we did the ribbon cutting. Uh, was that Friday?
Saturday.
Saturday morning.
And then uh, also went to another ribbon cutting, but I'm gonna say that for the mayor, cause he knows more about that than I do, but it was also a wonderful ribbon cutting. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hicks.
I'd just like to thank the fire department for setting up Arlo's uh, memorial. It's very nicely done.
Sir, Ms. Ripley.
I went to a YV cog meeting on Wednesday night. And they had a fake uh, bedroom there where you, they had, I think it was over seventy items that uh, you could pick out, you know, the drug paraphernalia and stuff. It was really interesting. It was real eye opener, what is out there and what all those little gadgets are. And uh, I won't say anymore in case Julia has something to say.
I went to one of those once and I was amazed at how uh, ignorant and or naive I am in that area. So.
One of the things that really caught my attention was the huge roll of aluminum foil in a teenager's bedroom. Now, that ought to be mom walking in there going, I was gonna baste the turkey in that. And why is it in your room? But there were other little things. They were just innocuous. They would just be kind of, you wouldn't know what they were for, that you would think maybe they were like an iPod, but they were vape things. And some of the vape things were no bigger than the end of this pencil. And that's what they were using to vape with. And it was, it was, the more you looked, the more you saw. And they were just laying out there in plain sight, but they're just, you wouldn't think that that was an item that was gonna be used for, for, I think it's called hidden in plain sight, isn't that what it's called? And uh, but it was really worth the time to, to examine that. And the program, the young woman who did the program was, she was really giving us a an eye opener how each one of us is an influencer and we ought to be working harder at influencing not only our kids, but any kid that comes into our house. And uh, but it was really, it was really well done and I really did enjoy it. And it kind of lined up three, three weeks in a row that I had tacos for dinner. That was kind of funny, cause it was a taco night at uh, YV cog. So it was, it was really good. Oh, and they did talk about the crime lab, which is getting closer and closer to completion and uh, opportunity that, maybe Jim can talk a little bit more about that. Um, but the crime lab is getting closer and closer for us to, to open and be you know, put in place. They've got some big equipment coming and then they're gonna be having some large announcements coming on later this summer. So it's, it's really exciting that this is coming together.
Excellent. Mr. Farmer.
Yeah, it's uh, this it's coming on Memorial Day and I think we all need to take a moment and reflect upon those who have served and those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Uh, uh, this is, this is the weekend that we should uh, emphasize it in our own lives and in our own families. And I just want to remind council that uh, there's been, there's been a lot of good people that aren't here today because we are. And I just uh, just wanna bring that up.
Thank you, sir.
Does, does anyone know if the uh, the FW will be doing a memorial service on, on uh, um, at the actual Memorial Day? Have we heard? Liz is, Madam City Manager is nodding her head.
I'm, I'll look for the email.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious about that.
Okay.
Can I? But I know that uh, there's two more of you to say, but I did want to say that um, I have haven't written the letter as yet. Um, but I have moved out of District Three and uh, I'm planning to run for election and at, in a large spot that Jim Rustucci is leaving open. I believe there are two other candidates or at least one other candidate goes running for that position. I hated to move out of my district, but I just couldn't find a place to live inside it. And so fortunately, there was a large situation where perhaps I'll get reelected. Um, but I've enjoyed, in any case, I've enjoyed being on the council and a formal letter will be in your inbox. It's by the end of the week.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll uh, agree with my colleagues on, on the comments that they made. Um, I also attended the YV cog, obviously as chair. Um, it was a great event. Um, uh, the, it is called Hidden in Plain Sight. Um, the facilitator was Jennifer Dorsett and she works for the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission. Um, her program's available if we wanna, if we would wanna see that kind of a program, maybe Sunnyside United might wanna see something like that. Um, it's a ninety minute program. She shrunk it down to forty minutes for us. Um, but there's a lot of really good information in there, especially on DUIs. Um, the fact that, you know, seven hundred and sixty-five DUIs last year. Um, fifty percent of them were marijuana or some other drug besides alcohol. So it's one of those things where we definitely, um, I, I truly enjoyed the, the meeting and as well as, as learning more about some things that I didn't know. Um, I didn't realize that kids were using alcohol to vape. Um, which is another thing that I didn't realize they were doing, which is another crazy thing. So, so those were, those were the things. Um, for the Memorial Day weekend, uh, Greg did send out an email to everyone, Greg Schlie did. Uh, Saturday, May twenty-seventh at six AM, we'll place nineteen hundred American flags on grays for all veterans buried in Sunnyside, the Lower Valley Memorial Gardens. Um, and then eleven PM, we'll have our standard um, uh, speaker event, ceremony um, at the Lower Valley Gardens. And our speaker this year is uh, Lieutenant Colonel Timothy Horn, Commander of the Acme Training Center. And then that evening at five thirty, um, we will go back out there on twenty-ninth um, to pick up flags. So the twenty-seventh, Saturday, six AM, Monday, the twenty-ninth, eleven o'clock, and then five thirty in the evening, if you wanna help pick up flags as well. So um, I think that's all I have, Mr. Um, yeah, actually. For your own edification, council, on Wednesday, the State Transportation Commission elected me vice chair of the commission. Um, so I, I'm pretty excited about that in my new role. Um, and uh, looking forward to um, assisting the commission as well as, you know, the Acme Valley Conference Governments, as well as all the other cogs in the state on when it comes to transportation infrastructure for our state. Um, other than that, Mr. Mayor, I don't think I have anything else. Um, no, I actually, that should be good, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I do want to congratulate you on your selection as vice chair of the Transportation Commission. Um, I believe you are an excellent choice for that. And so you will serve that commission very well. And it's also really nice to have somebody who represents the city of Sunnyside and has Sunnyside at heart, serving in that position. So congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, for my own self, I also attended the ribbon cuttings with Mr. Mr. Beeler on Saturday morning and I do want to commend our high school students for their work on this project. They didn't have to do a food pantry for the homeless. Yet that's what they wanted to do. Um, their teachers and advisors encouraged them and they did a very good job. They were very responsible in handling that whole process. And so I was, I was quite pleased with that. I, I was, I just thought that was just very, very well done and very well thought out. The second one that we attended was a bakery slash coffee shop called Rise. It is on Fifth Street, just around the corner from varietal brewing and right next to the gravel parking lot where we set up our food trucks for food vendor activities. And I can tell you from experience, their cupcakes are delicious. They roast their own coffee beans and grind them and brew them. And it is exceptionally strong coffee. And so um, that's a business and it's in a great spot downtown. Uh, just off of the main Sixth Street drive there. It's easily accessible. And what we're seeing there was the development of restaurants and eat other areas together, which has been noted that once varietal got started, that's something that we really needed and like in Sunnyside. And we've got some of the restaurants that have been downtown for a while and they're adding some amenities outside sidewalks. The city, of course, helped by putting some tables out. And I, I believe we're beginning to see a really nice trend downtown. And of course, we've got the one that's been under construction for some time now with Hoptown Pizza coming in. These are, these are great things. I like to see these things happening in Sunnyside and I really wish the uh, owners of Rise extreme success in their venture. extreme success in their ventures, because this is something that, that could go very well for them. Um, also, as Counselor Hart mentioned, she has moved out of her district, which means that her seat is technically vacant. Um, so in our next meeting, unfortunately, your chair will also be vacant. I appreciate you being here this evening and, and reporting on your activities. We have the opportunity to solicit applications for this vacant seat. We have two candidates who have filed to run in the election for that seat. And in the past, we have selected from those candidates to fill in for a period of time, although they still have to run. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's all we can choose from, but we do need to think about that. And I don't know if anybody has applied for that spot yet, have they? Jackie?
For, for, yeah. Well, the last direction I received was that she was able to stay and serve on council. So I'm not sure what, um, Kathy Fisher of the Elections Office says, in her office, that seat is vacant. What we do here is, is up to us.
Okay, I will then, if there's no objection from council, I will meet with the deputy mayor, and we will discuss a plan of action, and then, and from there. And then at that point, it'll be up to council's discretion to, to make a decision on it. Is that okay with you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, no worries.
Very good. Okay, so you will be getting some news on that.
Thank you.
And I do wanna thank you, Ms. Hart, for serving in that position. You've done an exemplary job.
Thank you very much. I've, I've enjoyed the ups and the downs and the, all the squirrels running in every direction. It's, it's really, um, it's a passion with me. I've always been interested in government. And, uh, working on this level is where the, you know, the foot meets the metal or, or the rubber meets the road. And we, we have a huge job, and I'm, I've been very blessed to, to work with coun- uh, councilmen who are very committed to the position, and I've enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Item D, upcoming council meetings, Madam City Manager?
Okay, so our June fifth, uh, workshop, we will have, um, staffing requests, special products coordinator and court bailiff and corrections officer. Uh, June twelfth, oh, and, excuse me, we don't have this on here, but Saturday, June third is going to be the special meeting for the city council retreat for us to discuss our, um, five, ten, twenty year plans for the future of the city and to discuss current projects that we have, um, either ongoing or that we wanna start. So that'll be a, a outside of a budget retreat, and it'll also be an opportunity for council to bring things forward that you think we should be looking at as well. So I think this is a kind of a brainstorming session for all of us.
And do we have a time and a location schedule for this?
Yes, the time is nine AM, and it does have to end at eleven thirty or eleven forty-five. No, I'm sorry, twelve thirty or twelve forty-five, because there's a one PM ribbon cutting ceremony that if you, if you wanna attend, um, we'll be at the community center.
Thank you. And I appreciate the hard work that our clerk has put into finding a date that works for most of us. We are all very, very busy individuals with all sorts of commitments inside and outside of the city and work schedules that, um, yeah, how, how you keep your sanity is beyond me in trying to schedule us all, so thank you for that work.
But we're glad you keep your sanity.
Yes.
Okay, and then June twelfth, the regular meeting will have a update of the classification and compensation schedule adjustment for union contracts and new positions. And then three public hearings for annexations. And regular meeting, the twenty-sixth, we will be updating the schedule of fees and charges in the SMC.
All right, thank you. Council members, if you have any items that you wish to add to the agenda, please either speak to myself or the city manager to get those added to the agenda, and please do so as soon as you can to make sure that gets on the earliest meeting possible. Item from department heads, Madam City Manager?
So I'm gonna go first this time. I talked to several of you before the meeting started. There is a key leader luncheon, um, given by Sunnyside United Unidos. I have, uh, tickets if you'd like to attend, um, and it's not a week from tomorrow at the, um, Saint Joseph Catholic Church gym. So just wanted to make sure if anyone in council wants to go, they get a ticket. Um, and then for our, um, planning retreat, so not only are we having a retreat for us to do planning as a group, tomorrow, um, city staff will be meeting at Snipes to plan for the planning. So we've got to kind of go through things and figure out what it is we want to present to you. So we'll be spending, um, half a day tomorrow, trying to get everything ironed out so that we have a good plan to, to present to you. Um, and then this weekend, well, I was just gonna say this weekend, this Monday, I would like council's permission to, uh, feed the veterans after the veterans, uh, plaza thing. Um, I did it last year, and I did it, um, and with the help of Walmart, but I think the city, we can do that, and it would be, it's nice, just finger foods and, you know, something.
Objections?
Mayor?
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Um, Ms. Albert, are they gonna do a breakfast like they normally do at the VFW?
Yeah, I believe so, but this would be a lunch afterwards for the veterans.
Gotcha, okay.
And what I did last year is I opened up city hall, because it was cold that day, and let everybody come inside the conference room that wanted to come in and have sandwiches. And I, I just want, want to know if it's okay if I do that again.
Ms. Hart, you had a comment?
I'm just wondering, where are you planning to hold it this year?
I just have them come into city hall again.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there, I, we can trust our veterans.
No, no, that, I, I, I didn't mean that at all. I was just thinking of space, you know?
Yeah.
No, that's wonderful.
And then it gives them an opportunity, if they need to use the restroom, that city hall's open as well.
I've not seen any objections.
That's a different question, that's okay, never mind.
Okay, well, no objection, I guess it's okay for you to go.
Awesome.
Certainly in favor of it, so.
Um, and then, um, I've, I've been looking at scheduling for, um, vacation, and it looks like my summer is pretty well packed with a lot of stuff that's going on locally. So I think what I'm gonna start trying to do is take a few Fridays and a few Mondays off, so I can start burning up some of my time, just so council is aware. Um, I, I'm already almost at my vacation cap, and that's the first time for me in a long time to be in that position. Because it used to be, I just, oh, yeah, I'll take, yeah. Um, but I, I am gonna start trying to take a few days off here and there, so. And with that, I'll pass it over to Jackie.
So the sound system Jafet worked on for my IT department, the equipment that you see is still the same, but in the background in that closet, Jafet and another gentleman installed a complete, a completely new sound system, which sounds so much better. You have two additional speakers here, and then, um, the same speakers over there in the back, but I just think the sound is so, so much better, and I'm, I hope that Deputy Mayor agrees.
Most definitely. It's been like night and day compared to what we had before. I was able to clearly hear everyone.
Wonderful, nice, awesome.
Mr. Farmer, would you say the same?
I, I can't hear. Uh, I, 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 I struggled, I struggled on some conversations.
So I just wanna thank Jafet, and he's in the back. I don't know if you, any of you have not met him, but Jafet's in the back in the black shirt there for all his work.
Thank you, Jafet, for that. This has been really nice.
Awesome.
So.
Mr. Riley, do you have anything to report to us?
Uh, not this time unless anyone has any questions.
Questions for Mr. Riley?
Mr. Martin?
Um, I don't have too much. I have some comp plan amendment stuff, comp plan amendment and text amendments that you'll probably be seeing in a few months or so. But other than that, no, I don't have too much right now.
Ms. Warner?
I, uh, wanted to just let you know that our annual report for funding year twenty twenty-two is due on Tuesday next week, so we'll be submitting that. Um, and then I will probably have a copy for you guys at the next meeting, just to take a look at. It'll be an unaudited version. Um, I also wanted to give you a heads up that we did have a little bit of movement on our designated crisis responder front. I don't know if you'll recall that we approved two positions a year ago now, um, with ARPA money, and there, there were no people available to fill those positions. Um, we recently discovered that, well, we, we know that there's a regional group coming together to try and get, um, DCRs for the Lower Valley regionally, but we also discovered that, um, our jail was looking for some sort of resources within them. So we reached out to Comprehensive, um, to discuss some potential workarounds, and turns out that they're gonna be able to apply for a grant that may benefit our jail and allow us to have some mental health services, um, in our jail for people coming and going, and also provide, uh, DCR services until that regional center comes about. So, um, we'll keep, we'll keep you posted. Rob should report on it, but he's not here today, so, um, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Acting Chief Holbrook?
Um, just a little bit of data and kind of some little stories, I guess, for you, but, um, just since last council meeting, last two weeks, um, Sunnyside Fire has ran a hundred and ninety, um, emergency calls, which brings our year to date call volume at, uh, one, sorry, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight, uh, calls for service, which is a, uh, an eighty-three call, uh, increase from years prior. So, um, just did some, uh, data collection this morning, which is putting us on track for, uh, approximately forty-seven hundred calls this year, which is by far, um, a, a growing number, which puts us, uh, again, by far as the second most active fire department in Acoma County, um, which, uh, has its pros and cons for sure. Um, but, uh, I would mention of, uh, some involvement with the high school program, and so this is actually, um, good timing to give more accolades to our, our local high school, but, um, Sunnyside Fire has been in conversations with the, uh, Sunnyside High School Art Club. And one of the things that we've began to develop with them is, um, we've provided them a, uh, we'll call it wall space um, in our apparatus bay, um, for them to, uh, design and create a mural. And so the conversations I've had with their, uh, the director of their club is we are doing a quote, everything Sunnyside mural. And, um, so with, uh, it's gonna be a summer project for their art club members, and we're still kind of working out the details, but I'm pretty excited that, um, they're putting up, was, uh, put up some conceptual designs that'll, again, go on the apparatus bay that, of course, will incorporate, um, Sunnyside Fire, Sunnyside High School, but the one thing I said is I want it to be a, in essence, a community, more community mural. Um, and so once, uh, that process is completed, which of course will take a little bit of time, but our, uh, plan is to do a, a ribbon cutting ceremony as well as a, uh, an open house, uh, for the fire department, so we can see, you know, it's been shut down for a while for COVID, and so I feel this would be a fantastic opportunity to open to the, uh, the community members and, and present something that I think is, is pretty darn cool. And anytime we have a visitor in the, in the fire station, it's gonna be out in the apparatus bay, it's gonna be a, I think, to be probably a pretty uh, neat mural up on the wall there, so more to the, more to come on that. Um, this, this one little thing is, um, many of you might have seen, um, some lost cat posters around the city, uh, little black and white cat. Um, and the, the days of firefighters, uh, pulling cats out of trees is apparently no longer over. Um, we, uh, actually were able to locate this cat in a chimney. Somebody had called in a noise from their chimney, and we're concerned about it. And our crews made access to the roof and, uh, recovered the cat from the, the chimney, and cat's doing very well, and the cat is no longer lost. So, um, we, we really get, uh, you know, calls are that positive, so something I'd like to share with you all, we thought it was pretty neat. So I don't remember the cat's name, but she's safe and sound now, so, uh, that's all I have.
Tremendous. It not can end on, huh?
Well, that is good. Well, and I have one other good note, um, just before we end this meeting. On Saturday, I had a conversation with the local resident and business owner, and he was singing the praises of city staff. Um, we always get the calls about the complaints. We always hear when something isn't done right, when somebody has been impolite or feels like they've been slighted in some way. This particular individual had nothing but good to say about his interactions with city staff over the last few months. So I wanna congratulate all of you and your, um, those who you, you oversee, um, for behaving in a way that makes us all look really good. Um, it was really great to have that conversation, because I've had the opposite ones too often. And boy, to get this one, this guy just couldn't say enough about you guys, so, well done.
Thank you.
So there'll be no further business to come before this council, and without objection, this meeting is adj- adjourned at seven fifty-six.
That's what I'm gonna go have, is a gin.
You know, when you say something wrong, that's when everybody notices, but we pay attention with time.
Good night, everyone.